I'd like to call the Thursday, September 19th, 2019 Board of Education meeting to order at 7:01. Roll call me.
Chairman Papa Holter.
Here.
Vice Chair Anafrio.
Here.
Secretary Sienna.
Here.
Janet Bosomo.
Here.
Carolyn Candelora.
Here.
Vincent Mays.
Here.
Cynthia Rice.
So we'll move the slide.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors? Student representatives, hi!
So before we begin. Madam Chairperson, it's an honor to welcome two new student reps to the Board of Education. We have Katie Peterson, she's a treasurer for the NBHS National Armored Society and has continued with a very rigorous course load during this being her senior year. She's enrolled in AP Bio, AP Lit and Comp along with many other high-level courses. She's an honor student and she is an incredible softball player, volleyball player, key member of our team that's won now five shorelines in a row. Not that I'd call you out on it, but five in a row shoreline championships. She's looking to major in marine biology and attend UConn when she completes her senior year. So, are you a rep? It's an honor to have you here. Thanks Katie.
Welcome.
Freddie Little was not able to make it tonight, so he's our second chair. He's a four-year secretary of class of 2020. He's been a very positive and impactful student at the high school over his four years. He's very involved in our track and field program and technology, video production. He's all around just another outstanding representative of our school. So Freddie will be joining. So are you going to do both reports tonight? Okay. So, take it away.
The annual NBHS College Planning Night was held on September 10th for seniors and their parents. Under the direction of Mrs. Detore, Director of Guidance, the Guidance Department provided an overview of the various steps of planning process, including applying to colleges, visiting campuses, and an overview of the individual meetings that will occur during the senior year with our guidance staff, parents and their teams. Next up, NBHS Curriculum Night/Open House is scheduled for September 26th. Parents will be following their child's course load on an abbreviated schedule. Staff provided an overview of their courses and the academic requirements associated with the class. And lastly, most recently Supreme Court Justice Sotomayor authored a children's book just asked. During the writing of the book, the publisher contacted Mrs. Diane Arthais of NBHS License Program for her input. Mrs. Arthais provided feedback after reviewing the manuscript and was then mentioned in the acknowledgements section of the book. Approximately a week ago, the book was released to the public and Mrs. Arthais was provided an autographed copy of the book along with being sent a thank you note from the publisher.
Thank you Katie. Wasn't so bad, was it?
Katie, I have a question for you. How do you get selected to do this?
I don't know.
Mr. Steffler has a number of students that he brings into the office and they, I won't call it an interview, they have a conversation for students who are interested and then they collectively select a representative, male and female representative.
Made a good choice.
Approval of the minutes?
Before we move on though, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add, a motion to approve the contract and appointment of the Director of Personnel and Business.
A second. Discussion?
Do we look at it first?
Can you just bring a copy of the contract for them?
Well.
Tonight?
We just signed it.
You're asking us to okay something that we haven't seen or discussed.
Two people that served on the committee.
We were the negotiation committee.
The negotiation committee.
Can we bring it to executive session?
Yes, but we need to add it though.
Yeah, we can add.
Well, we have to vote on it.
What we're voting on now is to add.
Add it to the agenda.
To the agenda. And then we'll go into executive discussion to make the contract. It might be. I seem to have a lot of.
It's motion made, second discussion, we need a roll call.
Oh, roll call, go ahead.
One roll call?
Sure.
Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Bosomo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mays?
Yes.
Then we'll move this to executive session.
Can you write it on there so that we don't forget?
Yep, got it. Got it. Okay, then now make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 15th, 2019 Board of Education meeting as submitted. Bless you.
Discussion? Roll call them.
Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Yes.
Janet Bosomo?
Steve.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mays?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation for Ms. Meg Peterson, K-6 Mathematics Coach, effective August 23rd, 2019.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to just congratulate Ms. Peterson and thank her for her time. She is now a principal at an elementary school in East.
That's great.
East Hattie.
Oh, that's great.
So it's great for her, we're really proud of her and we'll miss her.
Scott Lee?
Okay. It's a pleasure each year that we have our students who have artwork that is on the school calendar and we always invite them to be a part of this special night. So at this time, I'm going to introduce the art teachers from Jerome Harrison, Diane Remetta, from Tuckett Valley, Elise Wardinson, from NBIS, Kate Van Wilchin, from the high school, Liz Kaplan, and Lauren Conidi. Maggi, if you could come up please and help me pass the certificates out. And what we'll do to students, we're going to have you walk around and shake hands with the board members and as you go along, if you want to take your piece of artwork and then at the end, we'll stand and do one collective picture. Parents, please come up and take photographs. During as your child is getting Congress, is it a hit or if you want to come up after, we'll do one big team picture. Okay? I'm hoping that the board. Has received copies of the calendar, the man has copied the calendar. There's extra copies here, I'm going to leave them over here on the table. So please feel free to take an additional calendar. Okay, there are some students that were not able to have a mic this evening, I'm going to read their names and recognize them for this accomplishment. Isabella Agapina, please come forward. Marina Barnabucci? Caitlin, I don't believe Caitlin is here, Frances, she's not here, so. Anybody, please come forward. Alana Beday? Please come forward. Logan Amerco? Alexander Camona? Alexander Fraschante? Mia DeLore? Stephanie Rubio, I don't believe she's stuck in the seat tonight. Lauren Thousand? Helen Press? Patricia Linette? Elaine Pierce? Julia Petraga? Alexandra Reg? You get to stand with all the girls. Good job. Christina Rigion? Alexandra Seagah? Vivian Skerr? Audrey Well? So I hired a professional photographer, you see. Take a picture of that and then turn and just shake your board's hand back. My big smile with photography team. That smile.
You could.
Great, so before, I want to thank the art team and compliment them on their efforts. If you had the ability to go to the art shows on both sides of town over the past several years, you see the quality of artwork that our students are putting forth each and every year from pre-K all the way through to offering. Many of our students go on to major in art and it's because of the inspiration and motivation that our teaching staff gives to our students. So we're really blessed to have them as part of our team of arts. The arts are alive, our music program is thriving and our arts program here is certainly alive. So I'm going to recognize and thank them. Teachers are going to let you stand and shake your board team, walk around and shake your board.
I put it up and then take it out.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Keep on right back to the seat. Good job.
Nice job.
You survived my son, I think that you have my daughter.
I don't have any daughter. I had a foster daughter, yeah. I didn't survive Trevor, he was fine, he was great. He loves it. Great job. I love your career. Congratulations honey.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh yeah, little swag.
So cute.
Okay, the board briefs are present, I'm not going to obviously go through, you've had a chance to see them, so. To, there's a letter exhibit seeing in your board briefs, it's quite an honor to have Lauren Daner once again recognized at the national level. If you have a chance, take a look at that letter and read it. She's now qualified to go on as a finalist. If she is a winner, she would then once again head to Washington DC and be honored again as one of the top educators in the country. As you know, if you weren't on the board at the time, she was the Connecticut Teacher of the Year a few, three years ago.
Amazing.
There are no field trips. This is probably the, again, another just thing that I know we're all so proud of, that our strategic plan sets a goal that 100% of all of our students will graduate with the class each year and we have met, we had one student that fulfilled the obligation this past summer, so now 100% of that class has now earned a North Bramford diploma. I'm going to give you the updated enrollment, I'm going to pass this to my right. We are currently at 527 students, there's a breakdown of the class sizes, starting with pre-K all the way through grade 12. This is for your information. Any questions on that?
I thought we did this on October 1st.
Well, we officially sent it to the state on the 1st, but this is an opportunity to get it to you ahead of time with where our numbers are at. And it's important that you just, you have an opportunity to see class sizes at every level. I am going to pass a picture, we did not have an opportunity to have the budget meeting prior to tonight's meeting, but there's just one item that I wanted to share because there's been a lot of discussion about the canopy at Jerome Harrison, so I'm going to send you a snapshot, it is up, it is functioning, so you can take a look at part of our school readiness grant that we received, just so you can take a look at what it looks like.
Very nice.
Is it attached or not?
It's not attached by inches. That's how we had.
Oh, I know, I know.
It's not attached.
It looks attached.
Yeah. For fire code and things we.
Right, but the picture is to see them because it looks attached.
Okay, if there are no questions on the canopy, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Wu for the student achievement and for teacher and administrative evaluation plans.
So this is the bridge version of the presentation that I have passed on to all of you. The actual presentation is approximately 61, 65 slides. So I'm not going to look through all that now, if anyone wants to see the entire presentation, it will be available on the district website, there will be something on the front page and then it will be on the curriculum department's page as well as it connected to that front page. So these results are based on the Smart Balance results for grades 3 through 8 and the School Day SAT, which is for 11th grade students and happens in March or April of each year. So I begin most of our presentations with this slide because many people ask what our per pupil expenditure is or how we relate to the towns around us. We do comparisons to the towns around us because it's what's requested of us by the board and by spectators and by parents and by teachers. So it's very important to put things in perspective and this per pupil expenditure helps us do that as we go through the presentation. So again, it's a bridge version, I actually have extra copies of the full version if anyone would like that, but it will also be available on our website. So when we look at this, this is grades 3 through 8 in terms of North Bramford versus the state average in performance on the Smart Balance assessment. This is the general assessment for accountability in the state of Connecticut as well as approximately 30 other states. So as you can see with language arts, we've been experiencing a few dips as well as some areas that we are very proud to be excelling in and moving forward. We are at, when we look at our 2015, 16, 17, 18 and 19, we can see that we have experienced a dip. When I look back here, clearly we are near or above the state average at many grade levels and have experienced what we are addressing at many levels as an implementation or a change in curriculum, if you will. So many of your parents and have been seeing what your students are bringing home as well as attending curriculums to have known that they've been moving to a readers and writers workshop model, K, well, K5 as well as a version at 6A. These are some of the things that we're putting in place to help sure that the district moves forward in the areas of language arts achievement as well as supporting literacy through all subject and content areas. In mathematics, this is one of the areas that we've seen a significant number of gains at various grade levels. As you can see, we've a somewhat steady progression in increased student achievement. The next slides in the full presentation, there are approximately four slides applied with putting growth for grades 4 through 8 and with grade 3 through 8 at least four slides. In grade 3, clearly you'll see that I use blue for the state and purple, so I know that you cannot see the towns' names from some of those seats. At least the color coding will help you see where we are relative to some of our surrounding towns. We use Bramford, East Haven, Wallingford, Hampton, Clinton, obviously North Bramford, North Haven, Madison. This is grade 3 mathematics. Grade 4 language arts. Grade 4 mathematics. Grade 5 language arts. Grade 5 mathematics. Grade 6 language arts. Grade 6 mathematics. Grade 7 language arts. Grade 7 mathematics. Grade 8 language arts. Grade 8 mathematics. So obviously there's work to be done in all areas, even in the areas that are showing progression. Our goal is to always increase student achievement and help students better themselves as well as our teachers have a greater understanding of what's expected of them and how to help our students succeed. There are some things that we've been able to put in place recently that I think account for some of the areas in which we've had success. They include instructional approaches at the 6, 8 level as well as at the K5 level for both math maths and literacy. We've been able to implement a new math match curriculum over the last two years as well as begin the readers and writers workshop models at the K5, last year with writing and this year with reading and those are the files that Columbia Teachers College is really helping spread throughout the nation. As I mentioned, the other accountability used for schools is the 11th grade school the SAT in the state of Connecticut. Purple is North Bramford, blue is the state. We are above state average, I think it's a little close, but in all three areas in terms of EBRW is evidence-based reading and writing is what many people refer to as the verbal section of the SAT, the back mats and then the total score, which is the mine.
Tracy, can I ask a question about?
Sure.
What a 1022?
Yes.
What level or tier college would that get you into roughly, like, criteria wise?
It depends, weighted, some colleges weight them more than others. I will say that I, this question was asked during our curriculum meeting today about what do you need? I would suggest, you know, that the goal at least be 1,000 so that that would lead to up to a wide category of possible. There's not really tiers anymore. 1,600 without the writing and the state doesn't use the writing and so if you're going to teach Japanese, it has to be outside of the School Day SAT.
You could get into a competitive school with a 1022? You will, with a grade point average and a rigorous course load, it's a combination when they look at that. So at a Quinnipiac, you could get in with a 1022 if you had supporting class rank and coursework that you, you know, took AP, a couple AP classes.
So what this is, so the benchmark for the state of Connecticut is 480, meaning in the evidence-based reading or writing, if a student succeeds at that level, 480 or above, they are considered to have met the benchmark for career college readiness in the state of Connecticut. We have had at level 3, which is meeting at 480, 56.7% and then 13.4% at the exceeding level, which is above the state average. We are below the state average at level 1, which obviously in this case is what we're looking to do, make that number as low as possible. Mathematics, the benchmark level is a 530 for college and career readiness and the SAT. As you can see, we have again exceeded the state averages for the met and exceeded areas. There's the comparison against surrounding towns. This is for the evidence-based reading and writing and for the mathematics. Here is over the last four years and that's since it became a School Day SAT, obviously. We did not use this prior because it was not all students taking it, so it wasn't an even playing field, if you will, it wasn't consistently administered throughout the state. It is now, so we are allowed to use it and we can use it as well as the state and federal government use of accountability. Purple is North Bramford's evidence-based reading and writing scores over those four years and blue is the state average. Mathematics? Both experience, as we mentioned in that first slide, above state average. And this is how many students met that threshold benchmark for 480 in evidence-based reading and writing? And the 530 in mathematics. And this is both, so his or her students that scored above a 480 in language arts and above a 530 in mathematics, they had to achieve both in order to achieve both benchmarks for the SAT. This is a very bridge version, if you can see the bottom right-hand corner that says slide 65. So again, in those other versions, there's quite a few. The district, again, we have areas that we are beginning to focus on, areas that we have focused on, all in terms of supporting our students to higher levels of achievement and supporting them so that whatever they would like to do after a high school, career, college, the military, that they're prepared to be done.
So Tracy, I have a question.
Sure.
When we left last or even 10 minutes ago, one of the goals that was presented for Scott was to increase test scores. So I'm assuming that falls under your domain, how do you target your goal for improvement so that it's realistic? I would assume we would use these tests since you're already collecting data on them for that goal, but what are you measuring success for yourself because that falls under Scott essentially? So to make your goal different than Scott's would be nonsensical.
Right.
So how do you set that goal and how does Scott work with you to set that goal because it'd be something that would.
It's not only my goal, it's the administration's goal for each of their buildings and then the teachers have sub-goals, if you will, for their students. And then the teachers have sub-goals, if you will, for their students because it all contributes to the work that we're doing. Well, how I do this is usually state-based or using a compilation of statistics for at least four years. And then how I do that, see what the average rate of growth in the state is. I look at what our trend is. For instance, we have a CIP rate for, that from BIS. The state gives us what your goal has to be in order for me to keep that funding. So for that goal, they use the accountability index for school performance indices for both back mats and Language Arts, which breaks three through eight are Smarter Balance. It's a point five increase for Language Arts and a point nine increase.
Is that points or percent?
It's not. It's neither. It's a compilation, so it's a little different. But it's more, it's closest to what would be percentage of students achieving. So they want a point five increase in the percentage of students achieving the network exceeded category in mathematics and Language Arts. Language Arts being the point five and math being the point nine. I mean, that's the goal the state gives you. So that's what they expect us to realistically be able to do.
Is that attainable or is that, is that easy, attainable, or reach?
I think that's attainable with the correct resources and support for teachers and students. That is attainable.
And so that should get us higher on the scales.
So what, as a objective?
In the fifty percent, like we six tend to hover on all those slides in the fifty, fifty-five, like we're not hitting the sixty percent.
Right.
We're staying somewhere.
So they.
So how do we kind of?
So the state also, for each student, gives a growth goal.
Per student?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So the Smarter Balance has a target goal. And based on where the student is, they base those goals on what level student achieves at. So it's not, you know, so even if you're a student that's achieving at the highest level, they expect some kind of growth. Obviously, they expect growth from students that are achieving at the lower level. But they turn those levels by taking the average ability of students to grow at that specific level as well as what students have to do to be college or career ready that time in the high school. So they give us some of those numbers. What I do is look at what their expectation for students is and what they would, that would do with our overall rate and how well we can do that and what's realistic. I think realistically, you can't, if you achieve more than a two to three percent growth, it's very good, but may not be sustainable. It may depend on, so we also look at, and it's not in this presentation, we also look at cohorts. Meaning I will track a specific class and group of kids. That's the kind of work you want to see with that. It's hard to say, for example, if I say sixth grade, right, seventh grade was the grade that we are not obviously good with like to be in Language Arts. So if I look at that and say I need seventh grade to be five percent points higher. The truth is, the kids in seventh grade that this year are not the same kids that were in it last year. So their performance could be very different. And that's why Smarter Balance in the state now use children over time, not specific grade levels. They follow cohorts of kids.
And when looking at that now current eighth grade class, I noticed we shared in the meeting prior to, but there were, when the students were sixth graders, there was significant absence for the teacher in that class. Then in seventh grade, there was a significant absence. So they had two years where they didn't have their certified English teacher for a large percentage of that year. And that, that led into that.
So as I'm thinking about your goal, can you come back next meeting with a way for us to track it?
I have, I have a handout later that you're going to take with you and then based on your input from the last board meeting.
Perfect.
I'm going to have you mark them up and then I'm going to collect.
Okay.
So I have that later.
Okay, that's great. Just, this is kind of out of my domain of understanding, other than what I see at home. So if I ask a lot of questions, I apologize.
Yeah, no, and this will.
And so what we do and what I present Scott in terms of for my own personal goals and goals, for now, I'm using what the state needs to say. I have to achieve in order to continue state funding.
Okay.
So obviously, that's not just me doing that.
Yeah.
That's the administration, the middle school, the teachers, obviously the administrators, the elementary school, and the high school for SAT is obviously very fast. So it's really a joint effort to do all of this. So it's how we are all measured and what we all aspire to do. Any other questions? Thank you. I'm open to if anyone votes with the presentation, if you'd like to send questions, say email me. I'd be happy to answer it for anyone.
Hey Tracy, we're going to have to stay right with teacher administration evaluation.
So I have passed out to everyone, the teacher evaluation, administration, and then administrator evaluation programs. We are asking to vote and we are asking to vote on this. It is a lengthy plan. I do not expect to break. It has not changed. You have to vote every year by state statute. The only reason I even handed out new packets, because we have to change this school year. Because it's for one year only based on your approvals. You have to approve it each year. There's nothing in the plan that has changed. If you change anything in the plan of any significance, you have to get a state approved before I can even come to you. But because we did not change anything, the state has already approved it and said that as long as, obviously, the board approves it, it begins and is in form.
Is this just standard language or is it?
It's state.
It is, it's almost state. It's a state model. State is the model for the state. There are two things that we do differently. One has to do with the rubric that we use. The state recently made their model after Charlotte Van Nistens rubric, but it is, there is a proprietorship of it. So the state found out they weren't allowed to use it because they had to pay for it. They gave their own rubric, which is not vetted or validated at that point, because we're new. We chose to go with Charlotte Van Nistens because it was research-based validated.
Okay.
And it's approved by the state of Connecticut.
So it's. So that is the only thing that differs from what the state, actual plan and model plans.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 North Ramford Teacher Evaluation Plan as submitted. Second.
Discussion. We'll call vote.
Chairman Papalholtz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrier?
Yes.
Secretary Uziana?
Yes.
Janet Bosama?
Yes.
Carolyn Kandelura?
Yes.
Vincent Mees.
Yes.
I'll make another motion to approve the 2019, 2020 North Ramford Administration Evaluation Plan as submitted. Second.
Discussion. We'll call vote.
Chairman Papalholtz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrier?
Yes.
Secretary Uziana?
Yes.
Janet Bosama?
Yes.
Carolyn Kandelura?
Yes.
Vincent Mees.
Yes.
The second piece of the agenda or the next piece of the agenda in terms of educator evaluation plans are the results of the plan from last year. For sure, you have to submit to the state to add the results of the implementation within our district. So we did that on September fifth. They have to be by September fifteenth. First at June thirtieth, but then with modifications by September fifteenth. So we did submit on September fifth of this year with a one percent of teachers at the developing stage. A one hundred and forty-four percent, one hundred and forty-four or eighty-six percent of teachers are proficient and thirteen percent or sixteen teachers at the younger level.
One percent developing is approximately how many teachers?
One person.
One person.
So eighty-six percent are proficient. I'm meeting the standard.
And that includes educators, meaning administrators as well as teachers.
Thirteen percent are.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, agenda J is a NIAC certification support request grant that we wrote. We received notification today that we were awarded it. It is support for our pre-K classroom and pre-K teacher so that there's an intensive level support from September to December to support that teacher in going through the portfolio or the creation of a portfolio for the NIAC evaluation process. One of the reasons we aggressively sought this way out was we have a new teacher in our pre-K program and obviously, as well as our coaches are new or will be, our mathematics coach will be new as well as our Language Arts coach at that level being new. So we're looking for as much support as possible. It's a very rigorous process and required by our smart circle. So we did receive it. Next week, we start to make plans for that person who will be received. We are probably one of six districts that will be receiving this kind of support. And the person will call, it will be onsite, it will be intense for our teacher as well as administrator and supporting our classroom.
Great.
This teacher is a North Ramford graduate that student taught with us. So really excited to have her on our team and to see her role since leaving us as a high school senior. So it's exciting. She's doing a great job.
So any questions about teacher evaluation or anything, I'd be happy to answer them. Obviously, it's a level of aggregate because there are a lot of teachers in there.
Okay. Any other questions for Swoon? Okay. Feasibility study has been awarded to QA and M Architecture. We had a committee that met and interviewed four prospective candidates for this work and we unanimously selected QA and M. They are going to get started within the next week or so. Actually, I have an email that I received yesterday from one of the principal owners of the firm. So we're anxious to get that going. Your team will go into the high school and start doing that, that very important work of determining what's in the best interest of the community. We'll send them digital hands and then they will report back to us. Timeline, probably three to four months, I'm guessing. I will find out once we have this initial meeting what their timeframe is, whether they'll come back and present to the council and the board based on their findings. Okay? We also awarded the consolidation to Bloom Shapiro just the other night. He sent an email out to the board thanking Marcy and Carolyn for being part of that process. And they came back, or they actually came the first time after we reviewed the applications and everyone was pleased, you know, with their presentation. So that's going to be moving forward as well. Okay? Okay, the community roundup, as you know, it's a tradition in North Ramford. It's been a wonderful opportunity for the community to come together and contribute to the food pantries in North Ramford. It again is on Saturday, October twenty-sixth. If you are able to contribute or help in any way, you can notify the intermediate school that is home-based and they go out and do a fabulous job restocking before the holidays for families in need. And that is it for my.
Committee reports, negotiations.
Executive session.
Oh, yes, we are. We didn't have budgets in operations. Was there a September budget meeting?
No, we didn't.
We are September. Do we have an office meeting that we reported on that?
No, because of the.
We haven't had one in a while. Okay, we better have that next month.
We already.
We'll have a business manager.
But I just, I'm kind of feeling out of touch. I don't like that.
Well, the good news is, is we haven't spent.
I know.
The budget's in good shape. There hasn't been any snowstorms or catastrophic things in the building, so it's a good thing.
Curriculum, instruction, strategic planning.
Tracy hit that.
Yeah, she certainly did.
Thanks Tracy, made my, uh.
Did a good job.
Made my job easy.
Did you need to add anything, Carolyn, or did she cover it?
No, I mean, yeah, she covered it. I know they're getting, I mean, did you catch on the NIAC? They're getting the NIAC certification. So, yeah, she did good.
There was no pension meeting, there was no policy meeting, there was.
Can I just say something about policy?
I would love for you to.
My understanding is there were some things passed up at state and we haven't had a policy meeting since Don left. And I think we need to get something.
We'll resurrect, if the committee's going to stay the same, we'll get it going.
Yeah, I think we need to look at the states.
And who's on the committee again?
I'm, I think Vincent is.
Okay.
So now with, with the new person coming on as well, October seventh is the date. So we'll look to resurrect that as soon as possible. I'll reach out to Anne Middlefield and ask her to highlight and send anything our way prior to her getting here. And that way we can kind of hit the ground running with her. Okay?
Thank you.
And I'll send that to, to you electronically, so you have it.
And did you have policies that you wanted to get on deck first, like in mind, that you wanted to review first?
None that I can report right now.
Okay. No building committee, communications. Says there's no, there was no meeting. Was there, are you meeting?
There was a meeting, yes.
Okay.
I apologize, I'm a cold, so I'm going to keep it really brief. We started our meeting with honoring seven individuals. The 2018, 2019 Teacher of the Year, Executive Director Recognition Awards, and working theater. So that was nice. They came in and presented a certificate to seven and gave them a bag. So, and then they had a lotion. So it was, that was very nice. And then the biggest highlight, which is pretty much all I'll mention of this meeting, was Leader Hill has opened. It's the new building. It's two schools that combined at Leader Hill. The schools are separate, but they share an auditorium. So it's not like they're combined as.
So it's kind of like the intermediate school and the high school, maybe?
Pretty much. I mean, the auditorium is the only thing they share and that is on a time schedule basis, so they don't interact with one another. But it opened on time and it was thirteen point eight million under budget. So they're very, very proud of it and there's no debt. They didn't incur any debt completing their project. So it's pretty phenomenal.
It's huge.
And the building, as Susan will say, it was absolutely incredible. I mean, it was just amazing. They have a sound studio so they can create music. They have a room to film so that they could do. Videos, but it's for like opening like, you know, like for the whole school. They have a beautiful culinary kitchen. They have, I mean, beautiful pool, auditorium. The facilities were amazing and they're very proud of it and they should be. And as far as I know, we have two students, one who, each of the schools, that attempts from our district. So.
Leader Hill is where, is it Hampton?
It's actually at Hampton, Leader, and not Leader Hill. They listen to an original name, so.
Gotcha.
It sounds good, though.
Yeah, I actually have some pictures I could pass you if you want to see pictures of the building. Somewhere in my pile of stuff, so I'll let you guys look at that.
Thank you.
That's it.
There was no building committee, Marcy.
Well, the consolidation.
Or Carolyn, you were both at that consolidation, right?
Yeah, Scott pretty much reported on it. They were just awarded and now it's like out of our hands. They'll start their preliminary work now. Be a couple of months before we get a report from either one. Bloom Shapiro said hopefully December by the end of the year.
Very much.
Yeah.
All right, why don't we do visitors and press and go to the board before we go into executive session? Sure. Okay. So visitors and press. Okay. Go to the board.
I just wanted to mention Liz Hesse has actually put out on the Facebook that October seventh, Scott Driscoll is coming. It's a Monday, six-thirty to eight o'clock. I have seen this gentleman talk three times in our district and every time I learn something new about social media and safety of children. And he's just amazing. It's funny, I actually ran into him at Hartford. I'm like, oh my God, you're Scott Driscoll. I bought his book and everything. So anybody that sees this on TV or here, I recommend it for parents.
What did you say it was?
October seventh, six-thirty to eight o'clock.
Ten years of.
I, please, the auditorium?
Auditorium.
Yeah. Thank you for posting that. And he's very, very knowledgeable. And there's always new act, so even if you've seen him before.
He's updating.
He's like constantly updating you.
No, he came to middle school a couple of years ago.
He went to middle school, he was at TDS.
Yeah.
I saw him at TV. I'm a groupie. So, yeah, he's very, very knowledgeable and he has a, he had a book too. Forget what the name of it was. I have it at home. So if anybody's interested, I can give it to them.
His presentation changes every year because social media changes.
Yes, every year, yes. So it's definitely, definitely important for parents to go, keep your kids safe.
I went to the high school freshman orientation, which was well-attended and educational. So I appreciated it and I know my son did too. So it was very nice. Very nice. He's a freshman.
The fun.
The little cookout.
Fun, yes.
Let me ask you a question about the cookout. Were you disappointed they didn't serve hot dogs? Meaning, we had hamburgers, but we didn't serve hot dogs. Okay, ladies, that's a guy thing, but.
Honestly, my mouth is, ah, how do I respond to that?
I've talked to her a lot the last couple of years. All right, okay.
It was nice.
Feed the crowd what they want.
Yes.
I'm talking for a hot dog. It was hamburgers and cheeseburgers.
And they did a very good job. They did a very good job. Very good job.
Great attendance.
Yes, that's what they said, it was well-attended, yep.
Good to hear.
Yeah, I think what they, what did they say, eighty? Yeah, I think what they, what did they say, 80?
80 percent.
80 percent?
Yeah, that was a good term.
Yeah, it was good. Now we get to do it all in an open house.
All right.
Executive session.
If there's something else, I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per Section 1-225 of the Connecticut General Statute, as permitted by Section 1-206A and E of the Connecticut General Statute, to discuss agenda items, 7B appointments, and 9A negotiations.
A second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I, I did it.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-year contract appointing Martha Vaughn to the position of Director of Personnel and Business, to be paid a salary of $132,000, effective October 7th, 2019, through October 6th, 2020.
Second? Discussion? We'll call vote?
Chairman Papaholtz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafre?
Yes.
Secretary Ziana?
Yes.
Janet Bosama?
Yes.
Carolyn Kandalora?
Yes.
Vincent Mays?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, no.
Whoops.
Got negotiations, you said you had a court of negotiations.
No, no, we talked about it in executive session.
The next regular Board of Education meeting is, that's okay, is scheduled for Thursday, October 17th.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, goodbye.
Bye.